Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. As we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing after the pledge.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a few -- it'll be 13 years ago this Thursday, September 11th, that our nation was attacked. On that day, we lost our friends, neighbors, innocent people. Please, a moment of silence and remembrance of what happened on that day in honor of those people. Thank you. May I have a motion for the minutes of August 11th, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
These have already been discussed and Executive, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Name.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for the regular minutes of August 11th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Name.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
A motion for Executive Minutes of August 21st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Have already been discussed, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Name.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And the motion for the special minutes, or the minutes of the special meeting of August 21st, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Uh, stain.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Great, welcome back after a late summer break. We did not have our second meeting last month, but as you saw, we had to have a regular meeting to introduce an ordinance that will, has its second hearing related to refunding of long-term debt. A couple of things I want to talk about before I come down for proclamations and swearing in is one, I have a letter and a flag from Congressman Rodney Fillionheisen, our representative in Washington, "To the residents of the Borough of Madison, congratulations on the Borough of Madison's 125th anniversary. For 125 years, your beautiful community has flourished. More than 16,000 people now call Madison home. In addition to a growing population, the borough's rich history extending back to the colonial period allows us to appreciate how the borough has changed over the years." Enclosed, please find a flag and certificate which notes that the flag has been flown over the United States Capitol in honor of your centennial anniversary, centennial plus 25, and I am pleased to know that you will treasure this flag and it all represents the freedom-loving people around the world. Please accept my congratulations on reaching this important milestone with my very best wishes for continued success in the years ahead." So there we go, from Rodney Fillionheisen. Put that in your appropriate spot. As we all know, that as of Thursday, the traffic has changed and there's children on the road, so just a reminder, and we'll probably hear maybe in reports also, please drive carefully, there's the seconds you may save by trying to catch a little extra time around a school will, could cost someone their lives, so please take it slowly and with respect to all our children and our crossing guards that are working so hard to get them safely from point A to point B. A reminder for your calendar, on October 9th is our annual Game Against Quest Diagnostics, the Borough of Madison versus Quest, despite the fact it's a whole town versus a corporation we haven't won yet, so if you're interested in joining the mayor's roster, let me know. We could use some good talent, and the proceeds have traditionally been split for two charities, one on a local basis and the other on a national basis, so they will be playing for the American Cancer Society and also locally for Project Community Pride. We've got two proclamations, as I mentioned, and we'll do our swearings in. I don't think, is there anyone from the American Cancer Society who accepts the proclamation on ovarian cancer awareness month? Before I come down, I'll just hit on a couple of highlights and then just read the very end of this. American Cancer Society, this is a proclamation recognizing or proclaiming national ovarian cancer awareness month for September. Over this year, 15,000 women are projected to lose their lives to ovarian cancer and about 22,000 new cases of ovarian cancer will be diagnosed. Women who are middle-aged or older or have a family history of ovarian or breast cancer have increased risk of developing ovarian breast can, ovarian cancer, sorry, and because ovarian cancer also goes undetected until the advanced stages, the increased awareness of risk factors is critical to fighting the disease. So the best defense is our early detection and being aware of what you can do to detect this terrible disease can save your life. So whereas this month is dedicated to prevention awareness to honor those who have lost, to show our support for women who bravely carry on the fight and take action to lessen the tragic toll ovarian cancer takes on families across our country. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby recognize September 2014 as ovarian cancer awareness month and call upon citizens, government agencies, organizations, healthcare providers, and research institutions to raise ovarian cancer awareness and continue helping women live longer, healthier lives. Thank you.
Yeah.
Come on up. Thank you for joining us tonight. A proclamation of the Borough of Madison proclaiming Constitution Week, September 17th to 23rd, 2014. Whereas 227 years ago, delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia assigned one of the most enduring documents in history, the Constitution of the United States, and whereas our Constitution is the foundation of our liberty, has guaranteed the rights of our people through history of tremendous change and progress, and whereas during Constitution Week, citizens should remember who have fought, those who have fought and those who have died to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, and whereas this anniversary Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to learn about and celebrate the achievements of our founding fathers, and whereas the Borough of Madison, named in honor of President James Madison, the father of the Constitution, is celebrating its 125th anniversary this year. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2014 as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege it is to be an American with all the rights and responsibilities which these privileges involve. So thank you for coming to accept this and all your work on behalf of spreading awareness.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). I represent the Lowantica Precipinog Chapter of the DAR, and this is one of the missions that we have, to put displays in the local libraries every Constitution Week to remind our fellow Americans of the importance of our foundational document for our democracy. So I thank you very much, this will be on display at the Madison Library during that week. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have Chief DeRosa and Evan Webb, please come on up? And Evan, whoever is going to be holding the Bible for you? Okay, right hand of the Bible raised. Raise your other hand there, there we go, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Evan Webb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of volunteer firefighter, Madison Hook and Ladder Company Number One.
Of volunteer firefighter, Madison Hook and Ladder Company Number One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support, support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and thank you for stepping forward. (APPLAUSE). I state your name.
I, Andrew Palmer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of volunteer firefighter, Madison Hose Company Number One.
Of volunteer firefighter, Hose Company Number One.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true state.
Faith.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established.
In this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And under the.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard and thank you for stepping forward to serve Madison. (APPLAUSE). I state your name.
I, Christopher Burns.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of probationary police officer for the Borough of Madison.
Of a probationary police officer for the Borough of Madison.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
(APPLAUSE). Very special night, and you all are welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but if you would. Suppose I came for this part? We might turn the camera around and catch you leaving the door, but not you.
How are you doing? Good, 13. What's going on? How are you, Joe? I know we only meet you in the bank.
Is that?
This is different, we always meet you in the bank. Chris is Joe's cousin. Oh, is that cousin?
Yeah, he's my first cousin.
He's really excited, I love that, Joe beats up the way he's like, he, I love, yeah. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing for him. He does really well. Hello, how are you guys? How are you? Good.
Okay, reports from committees. Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Two brief things, one, with schools starting, the Board of Health just wants to remind everybody, the Health Department wants to remind everybody, that children should have their shots up to date. And now, secondly, this isn't really related to the Health Department, but it is health-related. About a week ago, I was down at the ambulance corps, and I was getting ready to go on duty, and I saw a woman in the drill room, we have a room that we rent out, her name is Jamie Conroy, and she was sculpting it out because she wants to set it up for a benefit, and the benefit is called Laugh Out Loud. Now, Jamie Conroy is the mother of a Madison Grammar School child who has autism. He's a high-functioning autistic boy who is in our grammar school system. The intent of this is to make people more aware of autism, the different types of autism out there, and what you need to do. I know as a squad member, we're trained, as part of our training, when we come upon somebody with autism on how to deal with them. So I urge people, look for this sign, it's $55, it's at September 19th at 7:00 PM at the ambulance corps, they're going to have four comedians there, it's supposed to be a nice night, so please, support this program, it's very worthwhile. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works in Engineering, Mr. Catalinello.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to remind residents that once-a-week garbage pickup will resume on Monday, September 14th, so reminders are up on the front page of RoseNet, but again, starting next Monday, once-a-week garbage pickup is resuming in the borough. The 2014 road improvement program has completed Academy, Vinton, Wilson, Belmont, and the Madison Free Public Library. Curb, sidewalk, and drainage improvement work was completed on Pine Tree, Derwood, Fletcher, and part of Niles Ave over the past two weeks. The contractor has started curb and drainage improvements on North Street. Residents, and this is important, residents on North Street that wish to tie in roof drains and leader pipes directly to the new storm drains and catch basins are advised to contact Borough Engineer Bob Vogel or Field Inspector Dennis Harrington immediately to coordinate any work required on private property. These storm drain connections have a secondary benefit to the sanitary sewer system by providing a connection point to dispose of rainwater instead of allowing drains or pumps to discharge to set tubs or other direct and potentially illegal sanitary sewer connections. It is anticipated that milling and paving work for the remaining five roads will be accomplished within the month of September. TILCON and DL curbing contracts were initiated pursuant to recent funding ordinances and contract awards. Curb installations and paving work are scheduled for completion this month to include Division, Union Hill, the eastern end of Woodland Road, and Prospect Street from Main to Kings. New Jersey Department of Transportation and De La Pelo contractors continue to make progress on Main Street and Madison Avenue. De La Pelo has indicated that the milling and paving work scheduled for several successive nights will likely be completed the week of September 16th. As a note to all travelers in September, there are many residents getting back to work and school this month and many others enjoying the fall weather, so please make every effort to be patient and considerate of other travelers, and above all, the safety of our younger pedestrians and bicyclists on Madison streets. As for the North Street Pump Station, a personal favorite of mine, the Electric Utility and Sewer Department and Water Utility are cooperating on the installation of new transformers at the location which will serve both sewer and water pump stations. The new pad-mounted transformers and electric conduits are on order for delivery next month, and it is anticipation that the excavation, forming, and concrete pads for the new transformers will be completed in this timeframe as well. That's it.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. The Electric Department, as usual, is always very busy, but one of the two important things that they accomplished in the last couple of weeks are, they completed installation of new battery banks at both of the substations, and they completed infrared thermal imaging at both substations. Along with that, they've been installing new poles on Kings Road, Loveland, and Park Avenue, which are very important because, as you know, during Sandy, we had a lot of disruption with poles being down. They also completed pole transfers at Park Avenue and Elm Street, Parkside Drive, and Oxford Lane. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Police Department want people in Madison to be aware that there's a utility scam going on, and please do not, if the people are calling claiming to be the Electric Department and they're asking for your credit card information, do not give that information, our Electric Department does not make calls like that. The Police Department is planning to put an explanation of this scam in the next utility bill, so they will inform the people of Madison that way, but they wanted me to announce it tonight. And also, congratulations again to the volunteer firefighters, Evan Webb and Andrew Palmer, and Police Officer Christopher Burns. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we'll be discussing the refinancing of a substantial portion of the borough's outstanding debt, approximately $15 million worth. Current market conditions indicate that this refinancing would result in a savings of over $1 million over the remaining life of these securities, which is approximately 14 years. We'll be accepting, assuming the council approves, we'll be accepting bids in October. One note here is that if market conditions were to change and the savings did not materialize, we could withdraw the refinancing, so we're not locked into what potentially could be a bad situation, we have to hope for the best and save at least $1 million, which would be very nice. KRE, the developer who purchased the Green Village Road property, has made the first payments of $1 million to the Board of Ed, $300,000 to the borough as reimbursement for the expenses incurred during the process. Beginning October 1st, KRE will begin paying the borough $12,500 monthly. At our next scheduled council meeting on September 22nd, the chief architect for KRE will be attending our meeting, this council meeting, to present his designs to our community, so I encourage you to attend if you have any interest at all in what's going to be there. There is a resolution on the agenda this evening to modify the electric rebate program so as to expand its impact on our less financially well-off residents, obviously we'll have more to say about that momentarily. And finally, update on strategic planning committees, they've worked quite diligently over the summer, we're on track to complete all the work at the very latest by the end of this year. I'm really encouraged by what I've seen, and when you see it, I hope you share that enthusiasm for the work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things, first, the Civic Center's full 2014 schedule for the senior center's activity and adult school classes is now available. Thank you also to the Friends of Madison Senior Center for funding printing costs for the recent electric bill insert which highlights services available through the senior center, as well as information on how to make a donation to the Friends. As requested for Meals on Wheels have grown, I'm sorry, requests for Meals on Wheels have grown, so has the number of telephone reassurance clients. Des volunteers make daily calls to isolated seniors, and that list has grown from 18 in July to 30 in August. And finally, the mayor was the guest of the senior center's first breakfast with the mayor hosted by the Friends of the Madison Senior Center, and they said you might want to make some comments about that when it was your turn. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and you reminded me, I went to add that to my comments, I'll just, since you, today was breakfast with the seniors at the senior center, and it was nice to sit down with them, I brought them up to date with some of the things going on in the borough, including, in particular, Green Village Road School, there was a lot of questions around the redevelopment of that property, talked about the budgeting process we go through and gave them a little education on that, and then took some of the questions from them, including asking a little feedback on how we're doing in management of the borough, and I've got to say that the comments were very positive, including one woman who reluctantly moved from Maplewood, her, the town that she raised her children in, said there'll never be a nicer town than Maplewood, she said, you know, Madison is a great town and I'm happy where she's here, so it was a great, great to have breakfast with them. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Okay, this is the first of two invitations for discussion, this is related to items that are on the discussion agenda or resolutions that are listed under the consent agenda. Ordnances will have a hearing, so you'll be able to comment on any ordinances that are listed for hearings, and those ordinances that are for introduction will have a hearing in two weeks where you can comment on those. The agenda discussions include Patriotic Celebrations Committee presentation, the Code of Conduct and Bylaws discussion has been pushed to the next meeting as we have some more work to do on those two items. The electric rebate program revisions is on the agenda discussion along with foreclosed property maintenance ordinance and construction fee waiver. So if you want to comment on any of those items, or again, any of the resolutions that are listed, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, the agenda item or the resolution you're commenting on, and then keep your comments to three minutes or less. And again, we'll have another discussion period that will be open to any, any item you would like to discuss. Anyone wishing to discuss items, please step forward. Ron, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Ron DiBiase, this is Jeff Pettit, we're on the Patriotic Celebration Committee. The resolution here is to, is that the Patriotic Celebration Committee, the American Legion, and the Elks would like to donate a flagpole to Madison to be placed on the Lucy D. Anthony Field. That field had a flagpole on it at one time which basically honored the housing unit The resolution here is to, is that the Patriotic Celebration Committee, the American Legion and the Elks would like to donate a flagpole to Madison to be placed on the Lucy D. Anthony Field. That field had a flagpole on it at one time, which basically honored the housing units that were put in after World War II for the returning veterans, and we feel it would be a fitting, another, a fitting thing to put it back with a little plaque that would commemorate that. There were some houses put in. It was part of the housing for veterans that was inaugurated by the president at the time and the state of New Jersey. Put in about 20 houses on that lot. They were given to veterans, returning veterans who didn't have housing to raise their families. A lot of those families stayed in Madison, are still members of the community, and we felt it would be fitting to reinaugurate that flagpole. It's a perfect location between the ball fields, and it tells you how patriotic we are.
Thank you. If you can stay nearby just in case as we get to the agenda item, there's any particular questions, that'd be very helpful. But thank you for your-
Sure. This is a small, I'm sorry for the print size, but most of us wear glasses anyway.
I think we all did receive this in a, yeah.
Yes. Great. So we'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you for coming out. All right, and we'll be getting that tour that shortly. Any other people who wish to comment items on the agenda?
I just have a question. I can wait.
Yeah, yeah, we'll call them back as, and actually, I probably could have told Ron to hold off, and then I wouldn't have held him to his three minutes, so. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we'll go on to Patriotic Celebrations Committee. And Carmella.
Thank you, Mayor. As liaison of the Patriotic Celebration Committee, we became very aware of the fact that over at the, what is now the ball fields at Lucy D., and especially the area that is the softball side where the teams now play. After World War II, many of the veterans came back and just really didn't have a place to live. We didn't have Anthony Drive, we didn't have Wayne Boulevard, and those houses were actually built specifically for returning veterans. In the meantime, they needed a place to live. So what happened is that these were old barracks in one of, one of the forts down in South Jersey, and they were brought up here, and people lived there. And as they moved on, and a lot of them bought houses over on Anthony and Wayne because they were little Cape Cod's, and they were inexpensive, and they were given, you know, veterans' ability to pay for them and whatever. So as Ron said, there used to be a flagpole there, and somehow it mysteriously got cut down. And so we thought at this point that it would be nice. It's probably the only recreation field that we have that does not have a flagpole. So we kind of looked at it, and there's, there's one spot that wouldn't bother anything, and so we'd like to put the flagpole there with a small brass plaque that denotes the fact that the, our returning veterans did live in that area. And so we've had the Madison Elks say probably they will. American Legion, of course, will probably help us, and anybody else who would like to help us, because it's going to cost a couple of thousand dollars, but we're willing to go out and make sure that the work is done, and it'll be done by the volunteers and probably one of the nicest groups of people on a committee ever will be doing the work. And we're going to get our flagpole and flag from Jack John at Stewart. So, you know, we just hope that we could go ahead and do this. Hopefully, we'll have it all done and do the presentation November the 11th.
Very nice. Quick question, and then I know Rob has one. A light for a flag?
They're going to be solar.
Okay, so there is-
Yeah, either that or Sal has to take it up and down, and I couldn't talk him into it. So, you know, there's some type of solar light that David told us about that, yeah, that just, you know, it'll reflect it in the evening. That was one of our big considerations, yeah. And believe it or not, there was no flag, there was no light there, you know, because I guess nobody wanted anybody to know where that, where those veterans' houses were or something. I don't know, but, yeah.
Rob, was that your question?
Asked and answered, Mr. Bailey.
Okay, thank you. Oscar.
Yeah, I just want to confirm, there's not going to be any problem with the play? You know, the, no. Okay, so they won't-
No, if you, if you, you can't really physically see it, but David and I and Ron and all of us, that we, you know, we walked it, so it's directly like from Merle Avenue, and actually, it's enough away from each one of the playing fields that it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be any problem. It's going to be a 30-foot pole.
The home run.
It's going to be a 30-foot pole anyway.
Yeah. All the fields now have permanent fences, so it's not as if even in between seasons, it's in play.
Yeah. And I forgot to mention that I spoke to Paul Alloco about it and said, you know, because they are horks, you know, do you have a problem? And he was thrilled to death that we were doing this because he grew up in one of the houses that was on, was on home plate, on Howard, so that was pretty cool.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Again, we've got part of the committee here, but thank you for all your work, and thank you for those that have donated or committed to donating, and those who are, who will donate.
I just have a quick question. How do you go about donating? Is there a mechanism in place to donate? Is there, what's the mechanism in place to donate? I mean-
No, we hadn't thought of, we hadn't thought about it. You know, we're hoping that there's going to be enough money from the Elks Club and American Legion, but I think probably what we're going to have to do is try and get some money. But we'll work that out, right, Ron? Jeff could do anything on a computer, so he could be in charge.
All right, thank you. So you can check with Ron or Jeff, and this is, it is a great story of what that field once was, and so I think it's great that we will now, for generations to come, share that story. Thank you again for all your work. Electric Rebate Program Revisions. Ben?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you may recall, this last spring, by a vote of four to two, this council approved setting aside $100,000 in recognition of the fact that for our least financially able residents, the increasing cost of living here has been and will continue to be an ongoing burden, and so we felt that the least we could do, and we had the wherewithal to do it, was to establish a rebate program whereby senior citizens and disabled people who are at an income level of $40,000 a year or less would receive a rebate of $100 each year. Now, we had not concluded whether it would be a multi-year project or not, because the notion of a reduction in electric rates across the board will be considered by this council in the future, and it may well be sufficient. We don't know that as yet. At any rate, we also required that the applicant be a participant in an existing state program that offers subsidies for rent, drugs, utilities, whatever, so that we didn't have to go through the vetting of an application to determine if indeed they were eligible. Well, we learned a few things. To date, we have 192 people who have qualified for the rebate. We have 32 additional people who've completed application but are not participating in any other state program. And so narrowly, we restrict them and would have them off the list. In addition, if all 230 were to go through, we still would have a significant amount of money remaining in the, from the 100,000 that was initially allocated for this purpose. At that time, some members of this council objected because they felt that we were being too restrictive, identifying only senior citizens and/or disabled people as potential recipients. We were, I in particular was a proponent of doing that because, quite frankly, I had no idea how many people would indeed go through the process. Now that we know, we have capacity to expand it, and what I'm asking this evening is that we modify this program in a couple of important ways. One is that we reach out beyond the restriction of senior citizen and disabled people to include all people who satisfy an income requirement. The income requirement would be adjusted so as to be more in line with what HUD uses as guidelines for subsidized housing, and that is to recognize that the cost for a single person maintaining a residence is substantially less than for a couple, and yet again, substantially less for a couple with children, depending on how many they have. The HUD regulations specified that 80% of a regional, 80% of immediate income in a region for each of those categories be used as the guideline. I have those numbers for us. What I've suggested is that we go a little lower, even though we're on the high end of the range for this region. So in other words, if we use strictly HUD guidelines and apply them to Madison, we would have higher thresholds. But again, being uncertain of how many people will apply, I suggest that we keep the guidelines still on the low side. In addition, we found that vetting of applications turned out to be a much easier process than we initially had thought, that verification of income was facilitated in other ways besides participation in another state program, and we're suggesting that the requirement be rescinded. So to summarize, we'd like to expand the program now to include all residents in this community if, excuse me, if a single member household, the $40,000 restriction would still hold. If it were a household of two or more, the restriction would be raised to, I just have to, we've played with this number so many times, just thank you, to 60,000, and for a family with children, to 70,000. So that is the proposal, and as well, we would still seek independent verification, of course, of income, but we feel that two years of file, tax filing suffices for that. Indeed, that's what most of these people have used to engage in these other programs that we alluded to earlier. So it's, it's quite easy to do. We overestimated the amount of time it would take. It's taken virtually no time. I participated in a couple of these myself, just to understand how complex it is. There was some concern about the time involved. First time out, I got someone in and out of the room in under five minutes, and it was a no-brainer. Three of us were at a meeting where we, we signed up 20 people in about 15 minutes. So it's not a big process. We are quite satisfied that this is not subject to fraud. People have come in over-prepared when they, when they've applied for the $100 rebate. That's the proposal for the change and modification to our electric rebate program.
What's comments, questions? Carmella?
Yeah, I think I, I'd like to just make a comment about this, this whole program and the revisions. Because it was a brand-new project for us, we weren't really totally aware, and I've worked closely with, with Ben on this, and, you know, the good people from the billing office and the Water and Electric Department right here at Hartley Dodge, who have, and who have been a great assistance to this program. What we started to find out was that we were eliminating people who really needed the $100 and just did not apply for all the other projects. One of the things that we did, along with that, when we visited the senior centers and whatever, is to bring all of the documentation for each one, whether it be pad or lifeline or whatever. And if, and if anybody has ever filled out these applications, they're state, you know, state-run programs, you know, you would just throw it away. It's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing for a lot of people to understand. But I was, I was just like blown away, you know, when seniors would say, "I'm not going to apply for it because there's probably somebody here that needs it more than I do." And we found out that that was true. You know, when we start looking and we start working with Madison Housing and looking at the HUD program and the people, we realized that there were families out there that really could use $100, and we were eliminating them. So I was pleased that, you know, Ben has come up with these revisions. I think that, you know, there's going to be a lot of people that can be helped, and for some people, $100 doesn't sound like a lot. For, when, we ran across a gentleman that actually only makes, only has an income of about $1,400 a month, and he's still a homeowner and he's paying like $8,000 in taxes. I'd like to visit him and find out how he's doing it, because it's just like, it's just mind-boggling. And these are people who want to stay here and live here, so $100 means a lot to him. But because he's not involved in all the other programs, you know, he had to be eliminated. So, you know, thank you, Ben, for, you know, for moving this along, this guidelines. We learned a lot. We learned a lot. Next time, if we do it, it'll be a lot easier.
Other comments? Pat?
Well, first, I'd like to correct the record. If I remember correctly, the last time, this had unanimous support of the council. Some of us had some reservations, but we did support it at the time.
I'll just-
It was a four-to-two vote.
I was, not to cut you off, Pat, but I was going to talk to Ben offline. I think this is good for all, all council members to keep in mind, whether it's a four-two vote, five-one vote, six-oh vote, once a council approves it, the council's approved it. So I think a vote is irrelevant in, at a discussion process.
Fine, I'm happy to destroy the council.
Yeah, thank you.
The second is, I thought the first program actually didn't have any restrictions other than income level. It wasn't restricted just to seniors or to people with disabilities, unless the state programs also had that level. So I thought we were approving a program that cut across the entire population.
No, no, it was specific to, in fact, if I recall, you and I had a conversation about that, because you thought that was an unfair restriction, that we should open it more broadly.
It wasn't the beginning, but I thought when you came back with the final program, and I was just reading through the document here, I don't see anything in the document, you know, announcing the program that says it's restricted by age or by disability. So those are two things. You know, I still, I still, it's my time at this point. So I still have a lot of reservations about this. I still think, and you're announcing that it was a four-to-two split, only kind of reinforces my thought about it, that this is really just something that sounds good, but we're taking our ball off the bigger picture, which is we should be looking to cut the rates for everybody. I know we have several months worth of data. I don't think we've actually had the chance to consume it and get it out to us. I'd like to see that happen as soon as possible, but, you know, at this point, I'm seriously considering voting no at this point, because I think we should start to look at what we really should be doing for everybody. I understand it's supported to some of these additional people, and that's the one reservation I have about voting no.
Rob, you had your hand up, and then back to Ben.
Thank you. I recall voting for this. I also recall that initially, we had decided, or the initial proposal was for seniors only, and then we, people did some work independently of each other regarding census data and things like that, and I too was under the impression that this was reduced, basically anyone, we just did it, I think, $40,000 income limit. I'm happy that so many people took advantage of it. I'm happy that we want to expand this, but I would like to, you know, stand by basically what I've been saying for the past couple of years, and that I believe in lower electric rates for everyone in this town. So I remember voting for it. It wasn't a four-to-two vote, it was six-oh, and I think if we're going to go on the record, we need to have things correct. And I'm happy that we want to expand this. I just think we should expand it omnibus for residents of Madison. Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, I guess I should start out by saying that when I alluded to the- Yeah, I guess I should start out by saying that when I alluded to the vote, I didn't mean for it to be a big deal, and apparently it is, so my apologies, and if I got it wrong, so be it. I do make mistakes. But I had no intent other than to just say that, you know, it wasn't unanimous, but indeed we went through with it. Only seniors have applied, so I don't, somewhere in here, there was a disconnect, but it has been restricted to seniors only and disabled people. And the final point I want to make is, obviously, this would reduce electric rates for those who apply, as opposed to reducing electric rates for all residents of the town. But I don't see where one excludes the other, interferes with the other. To my mind, they're separable events. I mean, I can recall meetings where people at this, in this council, talked about the elderly in town and the difficulty they have staying here. So, I felt it was overdue to do something about it. If you want to talk about a reduction in property taxes for a certain class of people, I'm happy to have that discussion. It just seemed that electricity was literally in the air, so I focused on that. But I don't, my vote on what we do with rates in general has nothing to do with this.
Yeah, we certainly would anticipate this program would be left in place with a change in rate structure. Any other comments? Bob, and then back to Pat.
First, you know, Ben, I want to thank you for being creative enough to come up with this program. I know a lot of people will benefit from it in the long run. As far as the across-the-board electric rates go, I don't think it has any place in this discussion right now. I understand the objection, you know, when you talked about a 4-2 vote, and I know that the whole electric rate discussion across the board is also kind of, I hate to say it, a partisan issue, so I think it's best if it be kept out of this discussion. I think it's wise to expand the program. I know that there are a lot of people out there who can benefit from it. I know that a lot of people out there are probably too proud to participate in the program. So, let's keep tweaking it, let's keep going along with it, keep it separate from all the other discussions that are going on right now, because quite frankly, we don't know where the electric rates are going to go. We'll have a lot of commitments right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Pat?
Yeah, I was going to say, we seriously need to remarket this because I'm reading the document that we posted online, and here's the, here's the requirements for this program. Your total income in 2013 must be no greater than 40,000. Electric utility bill is where you live in your name. If you live with someone who shares a responsibility for electric bill, then your combined income cannot exceed 40,000. You need to appoint jointly. You're a full-time resident of Madison. You're enrolled in any one of the following programs, and there's a whole list. But there's nowhere in here that it says it's restricted by age or by disability. So, I think we need to, if we're going to do that, make this much clearer to people this time around. Because as far as I knew when we were voting for this the last time, one of the reasons I did support it was because we did make it broad-based and only income-based.
Yeah, I think if I remember from the discussion, the restrictions came from the programs that you would be eligible for, that those...
Yeah, but I'm looking at those programs, they don't look like they're all based on those two things, so...
Yeah, offhand, I don't have it in front. Jimmy, you had...
We do have the electric utility insert reserved with the billing department to be able to put out another piece in October, so we're prepared to make sure that we could put out a good marketing push and explain the program.
I mean, one final question, did we actually turn people away who were not senior citizens? Or do we only market this to seniors? I mean, because as I said, if you read this document...
I'm not sure, I mean...
It would have, it would have brought you in, even if you weren't a senior.
The vast majority of the people that applied were senior citizens. We did not turn anyone away based on age. There are, as Ben suggests, as Ben mentioned, 32 individuals, family members who have not participated in any of those programs. We worked very diligently with them to try to encourage them to participate in other programs because they could benefit from it. But as Ben correctly reported, 32 applications are currently sitting on the desk, and by simply removing the participation in the other programs, that'll allow those applications to be approved.
And the resolution, yeah, doesn't talk about removing any of the restrictions, it just talks about the...
Can I just make one more comment, Mayor? I think there's a little bit of confusion here, too. The seniors actually applied a lot easier because all they had to do was prove that, you know, show us proof of their income. And what's funny is, a lot of them actually don't file anymore, so it becomes a little bit difficult, yeah. So, one of the other, the other things that became very easy is that we knew that everybody who lived probably at Chateau Thierry, for the most part, or at, you know, Central Avenue or 44 Cook, actually came under that $40,000, okay? So, all they had to do actually is live in those particular places, and they fulfilled the requirement without going to the PADD or the Lifeline or whatever. So, I, they were probably about the easiest groups to do, but I think Liz probably would know. She sees, she sees the applications, actually. They come into her office, but I think that, you know, the concept was that it was seniors and disabled, and that's, that's what you got, right? As far as applications were concerned, I'm not sure.
So, let's, not to...
Yeah.
Yeah, but basically, what we're making sure that, there is a little confusion, but we will communicate, do a much better job of communicating with the program and what the eligibility level, levels are, and pretty much that it is income-based and family size-based, and keep it, keep it simple.
Yeah, I guess this is my evening to underscore things I might have done differently, but, you know, I started out by saying we learned something from getting this far in the program, and I think probably the way we positioned it is one of the things we learned. So, you know, be assured that if indeed it passes, it'll be much clearer. But to my knowledge, no one under would qualify as something other than a senior citizen applied. I don't know if that's correct, but...
We did have a few.
You have a couple?
Mm-hmm. That have either on permanent disability or...
There we go.
Even the assisted housing, which was the second resolution that the council approved.
Okay, thank you. But obviously, we'll make this much clearer and much, you know, much stronger and see what happens. I may come back to you, and if indeed it passes, I may come back in a couple of months and tell you we picked up 10 people, and it just didn't happen. Or I may come back and tell you it's rather significant. But I do want to emphasize the one point that I, you know, I would rather, I mean, obviously, everyone has to do what they feel comfortable with, but I would like to remove this from this whole notion of reducing electric rates across the board. I just don't see them, obviously, they're focused on the same thing, electric rates, but beyond that, I just don't see them as the same thing. This won't preclude a reduction in electric rates. We're not going to say we gave away 100,000. That's it. I don't think that conversation's going to happen, and certainly, it's not a position I would take. This is a totally independent event directed at a subset of our population. And as I said earlier, if indeed we have an across-the-board decrease in electric rates, then I think we need to reexamine this program and see if we, in fact, need it to continue.
And certainly, the resolution is very clear, that it is just a assistance program.
Yes.
Ostry?
I was just going to say, it's just a positive thing. I mean, we're refining it, and we're expanding the program to help the people in Madison who need it most. So, it's good, it's a win-win.
Okay, any other comments? So, this is Resolution 251. Item number four, actually, three in our new count, is foreclosed property maintenance ordinance. Carmella?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Around mid-August, the legislature actually passed a new law that gives municipalities the tool, the tool to deal with abandoned properties. This was supported very strongly by the League of Municipalities, and it actually happened. And what this is, is that they gave us the ability to adopt an ordinance to regulate the care and the maintenance and the security and the upkeep of vacant residential properties, especially if there's a summons or a complaint in action to foreclose that has been filed. Some people will say, "Well, we don't have that many foreclosures in Madison, and we don't have, thank God, we don't have a tremendous amount." I think that there's probably about 10 foreclosures right now. I don't know what, what the number is for short sales or whatever, but in many cases, that we have banks that just don't care for the properties. And being in the business and seeing some foreclosed homes that'd be worth your wife's life to get into, I mean, to save money, these banks are closing down electric and water and whatever, making it totally unsafe. So, what I am asking is that we, you know, authorize an ordinance introduction to go along with this new regulation, the Senate Number 1229.
Comments, questions? Bob, Ben, Ostry?
I support this wholeheartedly. You know, there is a foreclosed home across the street from me. Luckily, the bank is taking care of it, but there are times, and I don't know if anybody's actually been inside the house yet, to exactly, you know the one I'm talking about, to examine its condition. I think this is worthwhile supporting, so thank you for doing this.
Ostry?
Confirm that, that the borough is not going to be on the hook for maintenance.
No. No, that'll give, that'll give us the ability, I mean, you know, there's one property that we had lots of conversation about that has been vacant for a long, long time, right here in Madison, and that's going to give, this ordinance will give us the opportunity, at least that we can, if there is a complaint against it, we could get something done, you know, and start getting somebody to actively make sure that there aren't four or five cars parked in the driveway where nobody lives and whatever. So, you know, I think it's, you know, I think it's good, you know, just in the event that this happens to us.
Jimmy, have more background information?
Well, just a couple of things that allows us to charge fines to the bank. It requires the bank to, if we craft the ordinance to mimic the legislation, it requires the bank to have an in-state representative that we can contact. We know who it is. It is a challenge for us in the Property Maintenance Committee to actually dig through and find out, okay, it's this bank, okay, who's in charge of maintenance, to get to the right person to actually affect the change. We will come back with an ordinance for introduction and discussion. This legislation does allow a municipality to expend public funds in order to abate a nuisance that has not been corrected for a number of months. So, if we needed to send a landscaper actor to cut the grass because it was clearly a health issue with vermin, we could do that, but the municipality would have recourse under various state legislative, legislation to collect those funds back from the, from the bank. So, in short, we wouldn't be on the hook.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, we will come back with a ordinance to be introduced at the meeting of the 22nd. Construction fee waiver. Jim?
I'll take that, Mayor. The State Uniform Construction Code Act allows municipalities to adopt an ordinance to waive permit and inspection fees for work done to promote accessibility to structures for disabled persons. Our construction code official brought this to our attention, and we have a model ordinance that's been included for potential introduction, and Matt has one minor wordsmith to that, which he can discuss, but this code, as, this ordinance, as just discussed, allows for us to waive fees for the repair or improvement to any home to make it accessible to someone that's disabled.
Matt, you're...
The minor wordsmithing, it just should say, in the ordinance, it refers to his home, it should say his slash her.
That is, okay.
To make it gender...
Any questions or comments?
That's minor and can be introduced.
So, there's still... Okay, that's Ordinance 48, which, as mentioned, will be introduced tonight. All right, moving on to the next section of our agenda, ordinances for hearing.
Ordinance 43, 2014 through 46, 2014, scheduled for hearing, that are scheduled for hearing tonight, were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting in the council held on August 11th. Ordinance 47, 2014, was introduced by title and passed on first reading at a special meeting in the council held on August 21st, 2014. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to general public requesting same.
I call up the ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing the Madison Utility Advisory Committee.
I open the hearing for anyone wishing to comment on Ordinance 43-2014. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 43-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion. Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 43-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 44, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department to Reorganize the Composition of the Police Department.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 44-2014. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
There, I move Ordinance 44-2014.
I second it.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 44-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 45, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Borough, the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to Update the Water Connection Fee Schedule.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 45-2014. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Sorry. Mayor, I move Ordinance 45-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion. Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 45-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 46, 2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to Update the Sewer Connection Fee Schedule.
I open the hearing for Ordinance 46-2014. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 46-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion. Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 46-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 47, 2014, refunding bond ordinance providing for the refunding of $15 million $76,000 aggregate principal amount of outstanding bonds of the Borough of Madison, the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, appropriating a sum not exceeding $17 million 500,000 to pay the cost thereof, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $17 million 500,000 aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds of said borough to finance such appropriation.
I move ordinance...
Oh, no, no.
I'm sorry. Pardon me.
And just a, this was introduced at the special meeting, and Mr. Wolkowitz did a good job of explaining it, so I now open the hearing for Ordinance 47. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward to the lectern. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 47-2014.
I second the motion. Council discussion. Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 47-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now, we're on to our second invitation for discussion, and this has no limitations on things on the agenda items, so you can please step forward if you want to comment on anything that's important to this body, and please state your... on anything that's important to this body, and please state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And go on, introduction of ordinances.
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for Monday, September the 22nd, 2014. It'll be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance 48-2014 for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 195 of the Borough Code Land Development Ordinance Regarding Waiver of Building Permit Fees.
I move Ordinance 48-2014.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Any further council discussion on this one? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda statement, please.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R248-2014 through R261-2014.
Four. We've posted the ones that were...
Two sixty-four...
We've posted the ones that were...
...to 2014.
I second.
One came off, though.
Yeah, one came off, right.
Two fifty-three.
Two fifty-three's been removed.
Let's do that one more time there.
Okay, Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R248-2014 through R252-2014, and R254-2014 through R264-2014.
I second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $23,851.43. Health and public assistance, $3,755.24. Health, public works and engineering, $157,833.89. Community affairs, $4,991.16. Finance and borough clerk, $3,640,329.60. And utilities, $117,110.14. Totals, $3,947,871.46.
Hey, Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Oh, right, okay.
All right, new business. We have several appointments. The first one, actually, this is for the mayor's appointment to the Madison Housing Authority, so it does not require council confirmation, so I would announce that George Hayman to a five-year term through August 10th, 2019, so this will be his first full term. And wish to make the same, follow in appointments to the Utilities Advisory Committee requiring council confirmation. And the first three here are for the three-year terms through December 31st, 2016. Martin Barbado, Jeffrey Kerr, Ron Poter. And these next three are for terms, two-year terms through December 31st, 2015. Alan Sawyer, Kevin Williams, and Herb Worthington. And these next two are for term, one-year terms through December 31st, 2014. Susan Pattonowid and Bill Hutchison. She is, she has moved, but the, is not required to be a resident of Madison. She's still, at this point, still interested in participating, and obviously, it's a one-year